I'd like to welcome you here tonight, just a couple of minutes away from getting started. Before we begin, I'd like to invite you to stand and join us in the pledge and then I'll bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you for today. I thank you for this opportunity to serve. God, we thank you for the place we live and for the city in which we're able to serve and to live, raise our families. God, help us make great decisions tonight, decisions that are pleasing to you, that will benefit our city, and we trust you for this and your guidance and wisdom in these issues, in Jesus' name. Amen. All right, let me begin to welcome you tonight. This is the Tuesday, October 10th, 2017, regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. We do have large print agendas available over here. Brad's holding them up if that would be beneficial to anyone. And all that said, we're going to call this meeting to order and I'm going to ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse?
Here.
Rick Culver?
Here.
Jeff Watson?
Here.
Mike Overton?
Here.
Colby Fulfer?
Here.
Mike Lawson?
Rick Evans?
Here.
Jim Reed?
Here.
Kathy J Cox?
Here.
Ernest Cade?
Here.
All right, thank you. We are at item four, for those of you following along on the agenda. Comments from our citizens. This is the portion of the council, or portion of the council meeting that the council sets aside each meeting for comments from our citizens. We'll hear brief comments from our residents. We ask simply that you come to the microphone, clearly state your name and address, and keep your comments brief. And please know that the council will not be taking action on anything you have to address tonight. So is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. Council, if there are no additions or corrections, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Move second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. What's your pleasure on procedural motions, council?
Move for A and B.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second for A and B. Roll call, please.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
J Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries seven zero.
You didn't get on taking bets on how long this would last, did you? Just want to be sure you're not, okay. I've heard a little talk about how long this meeting will last tonight.
No, but I'm doing my part to make it short.
Okay.
Let's put it that way. I'm doing my part.
Okay, go ahead, Patsy, thank you.
The second item is a final plat of what used to be called the Tuscany subdivision phase three, and I guess that's Benidetta subdivision. I'm not sure what the pronunciation is, but that kind of works anyway. This is on the north side of Harbor, across from Tuscany. Planning Commission reviewed this final plat, recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance accepting the final plat of Benidetta subdivision, formerly known as Tuscany subdivision phase three, to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency."
Please the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Denise?
J Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
J Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
J Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
J Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Both the emergency clause pass.
Second.
The next item is a, oh, God, I'm in a hurry, sorry.
Reed?
Yes.
J Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries seven zero.
You didn't get on taking bets on how long this would last, did you? Just want to be sure you're not, okay. I've heard a little talk about how long this meeting will last tonight.
No, but I'm doing my part to make it short.
Okay.
Let's put it that way. I'm doing my part.
Okay, go ahead, Patsy, thank you.
The second item is a final plat of what used to be called the Tuscany subdivision phase three, and I guess that's Benidetta subdivision. I'm not sure what the pronunciation is, but that kind of works anyway. This is on the north side of Harbor, across from Tuscany. Planning Commission reviewed this final plat, recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance accepting the final plat of Benidetta subdivision, formerly known as Tuscany subdivision phase three, to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency."
Please the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Denise?
J Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
J Cox?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries seven zero.
All right, thank you. Personnel committee reporting recommendations. Chairman Kathy J Cox. Kathy?
Yes, Gina, if you'll come forward in the interim, I'll read the resolution amending section 2.1 of the Personnel and Policy Procedures Manual for the city of Springdale, Arkansas.
Please the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for item A, approval of that resolution. Anybody have any questions? These are, Gina, you might just?
Just going to ask the same thing. If Gina, if you could just quickly summarize what we're doing.
This is just to update our personnel policy to keep us in compliance with changes in the EEOC requirements.
Okay. All right.
I have a question on that. I was reading through this this afternoon. Are all these requirements from a state or from a federal level?
They're from a federal level. A lot of these, though, were listed in another section of our handbook, and we've just taken all of that and moved it over into the EEOC. That way we're above and beyond in the compliance area. It's already in our book.
And you're consistent?
Yes, and we're being consistent.
Yeah.
So it's already in our personnel?
Yes.
But I think the underlying ones are the ones we're adding. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. The only question I would have, physical appearance, I know this sounds maybe a little petty, but, well, and the other one, their source of income. I can think of a few instances where that could be a situation where we would want prejudice or discrimination.
That actually, yeah, good point. That actually came up in the discussion at committee, and Gina, that was more of a, it's more of an accepted term. We do have requirements for certain positions?
Yes.
Where those things would come into play, and this doesn't negate us being able to identify those positions and have those types of requirements in those positions. Is that right, Ernest? Did I say that right? Okay.
Okay, so if a situation comes up, someone's trying to apply for a position, we can still just use discretion to differentiate based on someone's physical appearance, or there could be sources of income that would be questionable. I mean, we could, could we discriminate in those?
It depends on the position. We do have positions where that's, where we can have those requirements.
Okay.
Okay? And they would be the obvious ones, like personal appearance, where, you know, that I think we'd all agree on, yeah.
So not in all departments can we have somebody looking at JoJo the Tattooed Man?
We have that in our policy already.
Yes. That's addressed in our personal appearance and?
So we have addressed?
This doesn't override that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. All right. Good. Other questions?
I'll give you an example of source of income, how that could be a?
That's actually more of an anti-bullying statement against people that have a lower income than others.
Say that again, Gina.
It's actually more like an anti-bullying statement against, so that somebody can't discriminate against somebody that makes a lower income.
But they're applying for a job.
Well, this isn't just for applying for a job. This is for people that work for us.
For people that work for us as well.
Yeah.
I'm still not clear on it, but obviously if we're filing some federal requirement or a state, doesn't mean we shouldn't ask about it, but I'm a little confused about that too, Jeff and Colby.
So we should already know what their source of income is if they're working for us?
Well, here's what, here's what I thought we were talking about.
I just can't see where that?
I thought we were talking about something like child support, back payments and things like that.
Correct.
That's what I thought we were talking about. I don't know about this other source of income that you're referring to. I don't understand that part. Ernest, can you help?
Well, I can help by saying not everything that the federal government makes us do makes a lot of sense. I can say that.
Well, that's not reassuring.
But sometimes we do have to put that in our policies, things that we don't necessarily understand or agree with.
And again, this is language that's already in our policy that we're just being consistent in moving into this section as well.
I truly understand that point. I just think that their questions were justified and?
Right.
I'm still not certain about the final answers, but, thanks Ernest for trying.
All right, Denise?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
J Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
J Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
J Cox?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries seven zero.
All right, thank you. We're at item seven, planning commission, yes.
Before we proceed, could we recognize some guests that are in the audience that are here specifically because they are trying to earn badges for their scoring?
Sure. Would somebody like to come up and tell us who's here?
Their troop leader?
Do we have a, someone in? Come on up, we'll?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you Kathy for bringing it to my attention. Just come on up, right up here to the microphone, tell us your troop and where y'all meet, and we'll have your guys stand.
Sure. I've got a number of boys from troop 96. We meet out of the LDS church in Harbor. So, gentlemen, if you'd like to stand, they're working on their communication merit badge.
Which one, communication?
Communication, yes.
Okay, thank you. And thank you all for being here tonight. Thanks for being here, guys. I don't know how much communication you'll learn, but this much, but we'll try, okay? Thanks again for being here. All right, Patsy, are you ready?
I'm ready.
We're at item seven, thank you.
The first item is a replat of lots six and seven of the Sunset Industrial Park, Phase Two subdivision. We do have a large-scale development plan that was reviewed at the same time. Planning Commission recommends approval of this replat. Title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance accepting the replat of lots six and seven of the Sunset Industrial Park, Phase Two, a commercial subdivision to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency."
Please the ordinance do pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there further questions or comments? Anyone in the audience on this issue? Okay. Denise?
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
J Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
J Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
J Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
J Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
J Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
J Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Overton?
No.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Mr. Culver, what was your vote?
No.
Okay, Mayor, it's a four to three vote, and you can choose to be the fifth vote if you choose to do so.
Yes.
Carries five three.
Okay, next on the agenda is a resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Springdale to utilize federal aid emergency relief funds for the replacement of a bridge number 17411 over Spring Creek on Pump Station Road.
I move the resolution pass.
Second.
Mayor, could you give the same explanation that you gave at the committee so everyone will understand?
I'll try. From the big flood we had back in May, I think, in the spring, of course, the one-lane bridge on Pump Station Road at the bottom of Pump Station Hill was washed out. We've been working with FEMA, and Misha's here, and Misha was working with FEMA most closely, her, she and Sam both, and they did write this project up as a project, but they referred us to, they believed it fell under the purview of the federal emergency aid program rather than FEMA. So we contacted the highway department. I talked with David Mayo at the highway department. He agreed with FEMA that this should be a project that is run through their federal aid program, and so that's the direction we're going to go. If something should fall apart, then FEMA does have a project written on it. We're actually better off, probably time-wise and for sure money-wise, if we do use the federal aid program, because it's a 20 percent city match rather than a 25 percent city match. So this is a better route to go, but we need a resolution to really start that process going so the state can get us in the hopper and begin design on the bridge.
And what is that timeframe, Mayor?
They won't, obviously, they won't promise anything, so we could be looking, I even hesitate to say, but we could be looking at a year and a half, two years before it's done.
That's?
And I think that's a good, that's a good timeframe, so. But that's going to be faster, we believe, than what, than if FEMA?
Because you've been negotiating with FEMA for some time.
Yeah. FEMA's, you know, obviously, they've got their hands full with the hurricanes and everything else going on, so?
And part of this project will be redesigning it to a two-lane bridge, is that not correct?
Correct. It'll be a two-lane bridge, and the highway department in their design will determine whether it's for a hundred-year flood or what. So they'll determine the elevation that needs to ultimately be at that bridge, but it'll be a two-lane bridge.
But the highway department has the final say as far as the engineering design of the bridge?
Yes, we have to, we have to send this payment that goes with this, that's described in this resolution, but that goes toward our match also. So it, that will be a part of our 20 percent when this is all said and done.
And so 100 percent of that money will go towards that match?
Yes. They just, they just need this money to start the process. Any other questions? I know that's a bridge that?
We get several requests about?
Yeah.
And comments.
You're surprised so many people use that little one-lane bridge, but they sure do, and they miss it, and I miss it. So we'll, we'll get it going as quickly as, but we'll stay on the state, and this is a better route to go, we believe, so.
Mayor, if, I think one of the questions that I had had was, why doesn't the city go ahead and just build a bridge, but wouldn't it cost us an exorbitant amount of money comparative we'll wait for the federal assistance?
It would, and, you know, that federal money, that's as much ours, the citizens of Springdells, as anybody else's. So you have to weigh, I mean, I mean, an argument could be made, well, if it's going to be that long, why don't we just build it? But that's a, that's a big price tag for us to take on and for the residents of Springdale to take on when, when there's federal money out there that's going to take care of it, which, which our citizens pay also.
And are we, we would still be dependent on the state for design?
That's true. We're still, even, even that wouldn't speed up the process that long, most likely, because, because we've still got to go through all the approvals. It's a, it's still in the state's system, always has been, and that's why it's eligible. And, and we would still have to do everything in conjunction with their approvals. So I really don't think, and we've been advised by the state, that, that we really wouldn't speed, speed it up if we took it on ourselves. So, okay? All right?
Reed?
Yes.
J Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Please the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for item A, approval of that resolution. Anybody have any questions? These are, Gina, you might just?
Just going to ask the same thing. If Gina, if you could just quickly summarize what we're doing.
This is just to update our personnel policy to keep us in compliance with changes in the EEOC requirements.
Okay. All right.
I have a question on that. I was reading through this this afternoon. Are all these requirements from a state or from a federal level?
They're from a federal level. A lot of these, though, were listed in another section of our handbook, and we've just taken all of that and moved it over into the EEOC. That way we're above and beyond in the compliance area. It's already in our book.
And you're consistent?
Yes, and we're being consistent.
Yeah.
So it's already in our personnel?
Yes.
But I think the underlying ones are the ones we're adding, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. The only question I would have, physical appearance, I know this sounds maybe a little
Are all these requirements on, from a state or from a federal level?
They're from a federal level. The, a lot of these, though, were listed in another section of our handbook, and we've just taken all of that and moved it over into the EEOC. That way, we're above and beyond in the compliance area. It's already in our book.
And you're consistent with...
Yes, and we're being consistent.
In those areas, yeah.
So it's already in our personnel?
Yes.
But I think the underlying ones are the ones we're adding, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. The only question I would have, physical appearance, I know this sounds maybe a little petty, but, well, and the other one, their source of income. I can think of a few instances where that, that could be a situation where we would want prejudice or discrimination.
That actually, yeah, good point. That actually came up in the discussion at committee, and Gina, that, that was more of a, it's more of an accepted term. We, we do have requirements for certain positions...
Yes.
Where those things would, would come into play. And this doesn't, this doesn't negate us being able to identify those positions and have those, have those types of requirements in those positions. Is that right, Ernest? Did I say that right? Okay.
Okay, so if, if a situation comes up, someone's trying to apply for a position, we can still just use discretion to differentiate if, based on someone's physical appearance or there could be sources of income that would be questionable. I mean, we could, could we discriminate in those situations?
It depends on the position. We have, we do have positions where that's, where we can have those requirements.
Okay.
Okay? And they would be the obvious ones, like personal appearance, where, you know, that, that I think we'd all agree on, yeah.
So not all departments can we have somebody looking at JoJo the Tattooed Man?
We have that in our policy already.
Yeah, that's addressed in our personal appearance and...
I'd say we have addressed...
This doesn't override that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. All right, good. Other questions?
Well, I'll give you an example of source of income, how that could be a...
That's actually more of an anti-bullying statement against people that have a lower income than others.
Say that again, Gina.
It's actually more like an anti-bullying statement against, so that somebody can't discriminate against somebody that makes a lower income.
But they're applying for a job.
Well, this isn't just for applying for a job, this is for people that work for us.
For people that work for us as well.
Yeah.
I'm still not clear on it, but obviously if we're following some federal requirement or a state, doesn't mean we shouldn't ask about it, but I'm a little confused about that too, Jeff and Colby.
So we should already know what their source of income is if they're working for us?
Well, here's what, here's what I thought we were talking about.
I just can't see where that...
I thought we were talking about something like child support, back payments and things like that.
Correct.
That's what I thought we were talking about. I don't know about this other source of income that you're referring to. I don't understand that part. Ernest, can you help?
Well, I can help by saying, not everything that the federal government makes us do makes a lot of sense. I can say that.
Well, that's not reassuring.
But sometimes we do have to put that in our policies, things that we don't necessarily understand or agree with.
And again, this is language that's already in our policy that we're just being consistent in moving into this section as well.
I truly understand that point. I just think that their questions were justified and...
Right.
I'm still not certain about the final answer, but... Thanks, Ernest, for trying.
All right, Denise?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries seven zero.
Okay, the next resolution is a resolution amending section three point one three of the Personnel and Procedures Manual for the city of Springdale, Arkansas. Again, Gina?
Okay, this is to remove the word suspension out of this policy. It does say in the next line that this is not, this type of leave is not considered disciplinary action, and the word suspension has that connotation to it, so we're just removing that word from the policy.
Please, the resolution pass. Second.
Okay, any further questions or comments on that one? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
No.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Mr. Culver, what was your vote?
No.
Okay, Mayor, it's, it's a four to three vote, and you can choose to be the fifth vote if you choose to do so.
Yes.
Carries five three.
Okay, next on the agenda is a resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Springdale to utilize federal aid emergency relief fund for the placement of bridge number one seven four one one over Spring Street, or Spring Creek on Pump Station Road.
I move the resolution pass.
Second.
Mayor, could you give the same explanation that you gave at the committee so everyone will understand?
I'll try. From the big flood we had back in May, I think, in the spring, of course, the one-lane bridge on Pump Station Road, at the bottom of Pump Station Hill, was, was washed out. We've been working with FEMA, and Misha's here, and Misha was working with FEMA most closely, her, she and Sam both, and they did write this project up as a project, but they referred us to, they believed it, it fell under the purview of the federal emergency aid program rather than FEMA. So we contacted the highway department, I talked with David Mayo at the highway department. He agreed with FEMA that this should be a project that, that is, is run through their federal aid program, and so that's the direction we're going to go. If, if something should fall apart, then FEMA does have a project written on it. We're actually better off, probably time-wise and for sure money-wise, if we do use the federal aid program, because it's a, it's a twenty percent city match rather than a twenty-five percent city match. So, so this is a better route to go, but we need a resolution to really start that process going so the state can get us in the hopper and begin design on the bridge.
And what is that timeframe, Mayor?
They won't, obviously, they won't promise anything, so we could be looking, I, I even hesitate to say, but we could be looking to a year and a half, two years before it's done.
That's...
And, and I think that's a good, that's a good timeframe, so, but, but that's going to be faster, we believe, than what, than if FEMA...
Because you've been negotiating with FEMA for some time.
Yeah. FEMA's, you know, obviously, they've got their hands full with the hurricanes and everything else going on, so...
And part of this project will be redesigning it to a two-lane bridge, is that not correct?
Correct. It'll be a two-lane bridge, and the, the highway department in their design will determine whether it's for a hundred-year flood or a, or what. So they'll determine the elevation that needs to ultimately be at that bridge, but it'll be a two-lane bridge.
But the highway department has the final say as far as the engineering design of the bridge?
Yes, we have to, we have to send this payment that goes with this, that's described in this resolution, but that goes toward our match also, so it, it, that will be a part of our fifty, or our twenty percent when this is all said and done.
And so a hundred percent of that money will go towards that match?
Yes. They just, they just need this money to start the process. Any other questions? I know that's a bridge that...
We get several, several requests about...
Yeah.
And comments.
You're surprised so many people use that little one-lane bridge, but they sure do, and they miss it, and I miss it. So we'll, we'll get it going as quickly as, but we'll stay on the state, and this is a better route to go, we believe, so...
Mayor, the, if, I think one of the questions that I, I had had was, why doesn't the city go ahead and just build a bridge, but wouldn't it cost us an exorbitant amount of money compared if we'll wait for the federal assistance?
It would, and, you know, that federal money, that's as much ours, the citizens of Springdales, as anybody else's, so you, you have to weigh, I mean, I, I mean, an argument could be made, well, if it's going to be that long, why don't we just build it, but that's a, that's a big price tag for us to take on and for the residents of Springdale to take on when, when there's federal money out there that's going to take care of it, which, which our citizens pay also.
And are we, we would still be dependent on the state for design?
That's true. We're still, even, even that wouldn't speed up the process that long, most likely, because, because we've still got to go through all the approvals. It's a, it's still in the state's system, always has been, and that's why it's eligible. And, and we would still have to do everything in conjunction with their approvals, so I really don't think, and, and we've been advised by the state that, that we really wouldn't speed, speed it up if we took it on ourselves, so, okay? All right?
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries seven zero.
All right, thank you. Do we have any comments from department heads? Melissa?
Hello, I just want to just put out a reminder, the mayor has two conversation events this month. One will be on the twelfth from six to seven PM at the Tuscany subdivision clubhouse, and that's located at eighty sixty Buena Sara Avenue. And then the other one is next Thursday, October nineteenth, from six to seven PM at Shiloh Museum. And so far, we've already done two of these, they're, they've been very successful, very well-attended. We hope more people will continue to come out and participate. This is a great opportunity just to be able to talk to the mayor, ask questions and just chat about what's going on in Springdale and what you care about.